Welcome to the twenty-ninth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Let's go into public hearing, we're gonna call the first agenda item which is application.
Back it back up and do the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. I have so sorry.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular minutes of the twenty-fourth meeting and the regular and executive session minutes of the twenty-second meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the regular minutes of the twenty-fourth meeting and the regular and executive session minutes of the twenty-second meeting as previously circulated. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Minshiro Galaban.
I vote aye. Motion has been carried. Alright, let's go into public hearing, application number two zero dash two one four six one from Sow Properties Incorporated doing business as Hawaii Beer Lab.
Good afternoon. With record respect, Wayne Luke is attorney for the applicant. To my right is Nicholas Wong, he is the owner. We have no changes to investigators. At this time, we need to request another continuance. To what, March fourth?
If we can.
If we can, one month continuance to March fourth.
March, I'm sorry, Mr. Luke, um, what date was that?
Uh, March fourth.
March fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
Any objections, Anna?
No, just specify that the public hearing will be kept open and then we're good to go.
Yeah, that's great. Motion to continue applica- agenda item one, application number two zero dash two one four six one to March fourth, twenty twenty-one, public hearing kept open.
Second.
It's moved in second to continue agenda item number one, application number two zero dash two one four six one for one month or actually till March fourth, public hearing kept open. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Luke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into preliminary hearings, agenda item number two, application number two one dash two 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 six three from Mama's Place LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neo Gotto appearing on behalf of Mama's Place LLC. Appearing with me is Chantel Moniz, the owner. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, Mr. Gotto. Commissioners, any comments, concerns?
Um, yes, Chair, I should have one, um, just comment on it. I was reading the kind of business that you listed and just wanted to verify, I mean, um, that the, um, there were notes regarding, you know, post-COVID hours and COVID hours and stuff. Um, just wanted to verify that, um, no matter what happens, it's gonna comply with, um, whatever proclamations are currently active.
Absolutely.
Okay. Motion to I'm sorry?
No, go ahead, Commissioner Lee, sorry.
Motion to approve agenda item two, application number two one dash two 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 six three.
Second.
Then moved in second to approve application number two one dash two 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 six three. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Gotto.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going into agenda item number three, application number two one dash two two three eight three from Oahu Imports and Distribution LLC.
Hello, John Dewick.
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself again, please?
Yes, John Dewick of Oahu Imports and Distribution LLC.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments for the applicant?
No. Motion to approve agenda item number three, applica- application number two one dash two two three eight three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two two three eight three. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we're going into agenda item number four, application number two one dash two two four nine seven from the Pearl Buff Management LLC, Mr. Ueoka.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission, this is Uriah Robert Ueoka on behalf of Pearl Country Club. Also on, he's on video, it's Ed Kagiyama, he's the general manager.
Thank you, Mr. Ueoka.
In this matter, we submitted the, finally submitted the, executed second amendment to the management agreement this week. We submitted on Tuesday. I did have follow-up discussions with Daniel Sato and he said he was reviewing it. I'm not sure if he issued the supplemental licensing report. What we did is we tried to address all the, all the concerns, the previous concerns with the application. For example, the budget previously was prepared by the landlord, but now it's being prepared by the applicant. Also, the bank accounts previously were in the name of the landlord and we had that changed to be in the name of the applicant. Also, the operating expenses before were paid by the landlord, they're now being paid by the applicant. The work output previously was the right and the ownership of the landlord and we changed that to be the work output of the applicant. I'm not sure if Daniel Sato wants to give his comments as well, but just wanna let the commission know that we did make as many changes as possible to give to give the applicant as much control over the operations at Pearl Country Club.
But yes, if we could hear from, um, I guess, Mr. Sato to see if he completed our review.
I'm sorry, before we do that, I don't recall receiving the supplemental report.
Yeah, one was not, uh, was not completed and distributed.
Okay, thank you. Supervising investigator, Daniel Sato, I have not completed or actually thoroughly reviewed the entire agreement. Uh, there are still issues pending that I will generate a supplemental report with all the details.
Have you heard that?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Having heard that, Mr. Ueoka, um, do you wish to continue the matter until Mr. Sato?
Absolutely, we're fine with, um, we just submitted an offer to investigator Sato, we did submit it to him on Tuesday and it's, it's a quite complicated, complicated agreement, so I appreciate him taking the time to review it. If we could have a continuance for one week till February eleventh, please.
Mr. Sato, would that be sufficient enough time to get to the commission the proper supplemental report?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. A motion to continue agenda Myra, agenda item number four, application number two one dash two two four nine seven to February eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Before I second, I just wanna, um, I guess, thank you, Mr. Ueoka and Mr. Kagiyama for your patience with the commission in this matter. My notes taking a while. Having said that, I second the motion.
Thank you.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number four, application number two one dash two two four nine seven to February eleven. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you've not voted, you need to vote out.
I vote aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, the motion's been carried. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number five, application number two one dash two two seven five nine from Love Honolulu DBA Kino Market.
Um, good afternoon, commissioners, I'm Min Young Woo on behalf of Love Honolulu DBA Kino Market. Do changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Motion to approve agenda item five, application number two one dash two two seven five nine.
Second.
It moved in second to approve agenda item number five, application number two one dash two two seven five nine. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Mrs. Wu, Ms. Wu.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item six, application number two one dash two one nine three four from Halong Fo Noodle Bar Incorporated.
Hello, commission, uh, my name is Paul Nguyen from Halong Fo Noodle Bar.
Hello. Okay.
Hi.
Hey, thank you. Any comments? Motion to approve agenda item six, application number two zero dash two one nine three four.
Second.
It moved in second to approve application number two zero dash two one nine three four. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, moving into the requests, agenda item seven, request number two one dash two two seven six one from Eight O Eight Tavern Incorporated, DBA Honolulu Tavern.
Hi, Cindy Kamau here.
Hi, Ms. Kamau.
Yes. Good afternoon, commissioners. I would like to just request, um, another ninety days. As you know, we haven't, we're still not open and we haven't been open since July thirty-first. So I'm just trying to keep up with the bills and that would be a significant financial impact to have to pay the taxes that I know I still owe. Hopefully, we'll be able to open soon.
Ms. Kamau, have you, um, reached out to the administration and possibly looked at a payment arrangement or some type of arrangement for this request?
Um, no, I mean, I've had zero income since July thirty-first. I mean, I'm barely hanging on, being able to keep the establishment where I'm gonna be able to have somewhere to go, you know, to open for all the employees I have. I mean, that's a pretty big expense for both bars, two thousand dollars, it's, it's half a month's rent. I mean it. I don't know what to say except that. I mean, this has just been, it's almost one year we've been, you know, closed.
Okay, and you're requesting just a thirty-day extension.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, ninety. I'm sorry, I'm all confused. Ninety.
Yes, if I could just clarify on the record, uh, the initial request, uh, last year was for thirty days. The commission, in their discretion, gave, uh, the licensee ninety days. So we, we just rolled forward the original request, which is what's on the agenda, but the commission has the discretion to provide more time, less time, what, whatever pursuant to her request. So you are permitted to give her more than what's posted on the agenda.
Okay.
A motion to convene into executive session?
Second.
It's been moved in second, um, for us to convene into executive session. The commission is now into, has entered into executive session. Thank you. On take a vote, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, we are now in, in executive session. We are all back and, um, back on the record, I'll recall the agenda item, agenda item number seven, request number two one dash two two seven six one from Eight O Eight Tavern Incorporated.
Uh, yes, Chair, um, Ms. Kamau, uh, since, uh, agenda item number seven, Honolulu Tavern, um, since you were not, you still are not open, um, my motion would be to approve um, request number seven, request number two one dash two two seven six one for a sixty-day extension.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two seven six one for an additional sixty days. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, stay on that, we're gonna call you on the next agenda.
Well, that's right, after practice.
Okay, we are gonna now call agenda item eight, request number two one dash two two seven six two from nine six seven three four Tavern Incorporated, DBA Kaileua Tavern. Please identify yourself for the record for agenda item eight, please.
This is Cindy Kamau for nine six seven three four Tavern Inc., Kaileua Tavern, asking for an extension, sixty days.
Okay, Ms. Kamau.
Same, you know, we're not open and we haven't been open. You know, I know this is hard for everybody, but I just could use some more time.
So Kaileua, Kaileua Ta- Tavern, you haven't been open?
Haven't been open also. I have a, um, both of them, I have a dispensers license and even though I have kitchens at both places, um, I have, you know, I, I haven't been able to open. We still, I mean, we're considered a bar. So, I mean, there's really not a lot I can do.
When was the last day that you were open, that you recall?
July thirty-first was the last day we were allowed to open.
Okay, any further questions? My motion is to approve, um, request number eight, request number two one dash two two seven six two for another sixty days.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two seven six two uh, for an additional sixty days. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And I hope I get to open and the next time you hear from me, you get a check.
Thanks. Okay, we are now moving to, um, agenda item number nine, request number two one dash two two seven one from Scarlet Honolulu Incorporated. Mr. Luna?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Joseph Luna, double-digit Scarlet Honolulu.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, Mr. Luna, um, based on what you heard from our previous, previous licenses, um, are you currently in operation or are you, are you, are you?
We, we are not permitted by the city to operate. We actually do not have a kitchen unlike them. Um, so we are purely, uh, liquor service bar nightclub, um, so we are not permitted to be open at all. Uh, I'm not sure from anything we've heard from the city what may change as far as the timeline, uh, but we are not currently allowed to have any customers at all on premises, uh, because of our license.
Okay. Uh, my motion would be to approve, um, request number nine, request number two one dash two two seven seven one, um, again for additional sixty days.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two seven one for an additional sixty days. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Good luck, Mr. Luna.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay. We're done? Again, a motion?
Yes, Chair, uh, motion to approve the adoption of decision and order, agenda items number ten through twelve inclusive.
Second.
It moved in second to, to approve the adoption of decision and order for agenda items ten and twelve. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. We are now in the portion of adjudication hearings, Ms. Gotto.
Hi, good afternoon, chair members of the commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel, Pedro Gotto.
Thank you, I think, um, Commissioner Minshiro will take adjudications from here forth. Let me call the agenda item, agenda item thirteen, Bozu Japanese Restaurant.
Hi, uh, my name is Katshiro Hoshi, uh, Bozu Japanese restaurant owner. So.
And, um, hi, um, I'm Megumi, I'm an employee of the Bozu Japanese restaurant. I'm present here to, as an interpreter for my boss.
Could you spell your last name, please?
My last name, Kim, here I am.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Gotto.
On or about October fifteen, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to wit, violating the terms of the Office of the Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu's Emergency Order Number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty Eight COVID nineteen novel coronavirus amendment to Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier one dated October twelve, two thousand twenty, in violation of section two eighty-one thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statute.
But, Kim, do you need to interpret or translate that for Mr. Hoshi?
Yeah, um, can you give me a little bit of time, please?
Yes.
Ten P M, yes. Hi, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, how do you wish to plead?
I'm sorry?
How does Mr. Hoshi wish to plead?
No, not, ladies.
Uh, the, the?
Nah, no, not the.
He says he doesn't have, um, anything to plead and he, um, he, um, basically, um, he admits to his fault.
Okay, um, let me just, um, pause you there. He can accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest.
Um, just to make sure, um, so, um, I haven't received much information regarding this other than, um, the paper I received of the licensee copy regarding the hearing over here. So, um, are we, are we pleading for, um, so, um, what is our penalty that we are receiving? I am quite not too sure.
Okay, so the way we're gonna do this process, Ms. Kim, is that, and if you can explain to Mr. Hoshi, the, um, licensee was cited for violating the charge that was read by the prosecutor. And at this stage, we're asking Mr. Hoshi to enter a plea, in other words, responding to the charge. And his options are accept the plea, accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest. The nature of penalty depends on what the prosecutor recommends, but we cannot, I cannot tell you what that is at this time.
I agree, but some days' clause will have penalty,以外には penaltyがある.
Oh, um, he says that, um, he, um, yeah, he, um, admits to whatever the prosecutor read up right now. It's just that, um, so we already repeat the twenty-four hour shutdown because of the, um,
Okay, hold on, hold on, one second.
Yeah.
Hold on one second, Ms. Kim, um, is he saying that he accepts the charge?
He accepts the charge, it's just that he's, um, curious whether, oh, yeah.
Hold on, he, he, he has a chance to explain what happened, um,
Okay.
in a few minutes. Uh, motion to, um, accept the plea, accepting the charge.
He accept.
A second motion. Yes.
It's, they moved in second to accept the plea. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Um, motion carried.
Ms. Gotto, what is your recommendation?
This is the first violation of this time, um, the the, um, conduct was that they were serving alcohol. Um, they were caught by the Liquor Commission investigators at eleven eighteen P M serving alcohol and they should have stopped serving at ten o'clock. Based on that, um, my recommended fine is one thousand two hundred eighty dollars. So the five hundred dollar base fine plus seven hundred eighty dollars, um, for each minute af- to accommodate each minute after the, um, required stop service time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kim.
Hi, yes.
If you could explain what the prosecutor just said to Mr. Hoshi and he can provide his comments in response to that.
What was, I'm sorry, what was the one thousand?
One thousand two hundred eighty.
I, so.
Ten year. ずっと飲んでたわけじゃないの? 時間は関係ない?
So, uh, he says he understands, um,
Yes, I understand.
Or he understands why, where, why the penalty is, the, the fine is that amount.
Okay, does, um, does he wish to make any comment or explanation why he was serving or allowing service of alcohol after?
お酒飲んでるよ? Ah,あの，regulationをミスアンダースアンでした
So, um, he said he misunderstood the regulation because, um, so what basically happened was, um, so that day, we had a, um, we normally don't drink, but that day we happened to have a customer that, um, bought drinks for the kitchen. And then, um, so after we were done with everything, cleaning, um, closing up, then, um, we didn't want to waste the drinks that the customer bought for us, that's why we, um, drank it. And then it was around, so we weren't drinking from ten o'clock to eleven, we just drank a little bit after eleven. And that's when, um, the liquor commission came in. And then, um, they caught us at eleven eighteen. Yeah, so that's pretty much what has happened. So we weren't serving the customers, it was, um, the employee that, ah, after we walked out.
Okay, thank you for, uh, being forthright with us, I appreciate your, um, honesty. My motion is gonna be to approve the recommended fine of one thousand two hundred eighty dollars for agenda item fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second to a, to approve the recommended fine of one thousand two hundred eighty dollars. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Hoshi.
Thank you.
Ms. Kim.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number fourteen, Choice Garden Korean.
Hi. This is Hyung Suk Kim from Choice Garden. I'm a manager of this restaurant.
Ms. Gotto?
On or about November seventh, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to wit, violating the terms of the Office of the Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu's Emergency Order Number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty Nine COVID nineteen novel coronavirus Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier two dated October twenty, two thousand twenty, in violation of section two eighty-one thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statute.
Ms. Kim, how do you wish to plead?
Um, uh, we admitted our faults, um, but uh, we got our long information, uh, yes.
Hold on, you can, I can, um, we, let's first take your, um, statement that you're gonna admit fault and then we can offer you explanation later, okay?
I see, yes.
Okay, motion to accept the plea admitting, uh, the violation.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the plea admitting to the violation. All those in favor?
Yes.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Gotto, what is your recommendation?
Recommended fine is five hundred dollars. This is a first violation of this type and the violation, um, was not having accurate contact tracing information.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kim, if you want. Thank you. Uh Ms. Kim, if you want to provide your explanation, please do so.
Yes, uh we got our own information from our loyalty customers who are work in the civil servant that there is no need to write down the customer information. But uh we can misconduct and then we violate the city uh regulations. We all admit everything, yeah. Yes.
Okay, thank you for your explanation. In the future, if you do have questions on compliance with rules and regulations, please feel free to reach out to the administration. They're more than willing to help you in that regard, okay?
Yes.
Um having said that, my motion is to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number fourteen. All those in favor?
I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I, motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm calling agenda item number fifteen, Dixie Grill Barbecue and Crab Shack.
Hi, Tina Wery.
On or about October eleventh, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to wit, violating the terms of Office of the Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu's Emergency Order Number twenty twenty dash twenty seven for COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier one dated September twenty-three, two thousand twenty in violation of section two eighty one thirty eight of the Hawaii Revised Statutes.
How do you wish to plead, Ms. Wery?
No contest.
Thank you. Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest, no contest plea. All those in favor?
I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is a five hundred dollar fine. This is the first violation of this type and the violation was um no contact tracing.
Meaning not keeping records of no contact tracing?
Not keeping records of the customers as they walked into the restaurant, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh Ms. Wery, do you wanna provide any comments or explanation?
Um yeah, it was a new employee that had not been trained properly, so we made sure that she was trained properly and it hasn't happened since.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item fifty.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number fifteen. All those in favor?
I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I, motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Wery.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Okay, calling agenda item sixteen, Gyotaku Resh- Japanese Restaurant.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Neo Gota appearing on behalf of Gyotaku Japanese Restaurant. Appearing with me is Tom Jones, a co-owner. We waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Thank you, Mister Gota. Motion to accept the plea of no contest.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata, what's your recommendation?
The recommendation is five hundred ninety dollars. The violation is having alcohol available after ten P M. So it's five hundred dollar base fine plus ninety dollars to accommodate or to account for all of the time after ten P M that alcohol was available.
Okay, what was the time of the violation?
It was ten or nine P M.
Okay, and first violation?
This is the first violation of this type, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mister Gota, do you or your client wish to make any comments?
Yes, uh you know, just as an explanation and not as an excuse, this was a new manager who apparently allowed employees after they finished all their closing uh routine to allow consumption on the premise. It is completely against company policy. Um this issue was addressed through both discipline and retraining. Uh we haven't had problems since.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred ninety dollars for agenda item sixteen.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred ninety dollars for agenda item number sixteen. All those in favor?
I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I, motion is carried. Thank you, Mister Gota.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into agenda item number seventeen, Isakayo, Isakaya Naru. Anybody appearing for agenda item number seventeen? Isakaya Naru?
Yes.
Sorry, video.
Christopher Cody, okay. Mister Cody, please um identify yourself for the record and your.
Uh I'm Christopher Cody, manager, Isakaya Naru.
Ms. Ogata.
On or about October twenty-nine, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with any other laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to wit, violation of Office of the Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu's Emergency Order Number twenty twenty dash twenty nine no Co- COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier two signed on October twenty, two thousand twenty in violation of section two eighty one dash thirty eight of the Hawaii Revised Statute.
Cody, how do you wish to plead?
Uh we know that uh we felt to uh keep the record on the customers.
Okay, right now, I'm just asking how do you plead to the charge? You can accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest?
Uh I know, I want to talk, I have my boss here. So I'm gonna explain to him. And then he'll just, he'll decide.
That's fine.
Uh so the charge you like. Yeah, we accept the charge.
Thank you, Mister Cody. Uh before I make my motion, uh could you identify your boss by his name and spell his last name for the record?
Uh it's uh Hiroyuki Akayama. Last name is spelled A K I Y A M A.
Okay, thank you. Uh motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata, your recommendation, please?
This is the first violation of this type. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars. On the violation of the rule is that they did not keep accurate contact tracing information for customers.
Mister Cody, um do you have any explanation or comment?
Um well, uh this would be a like a excuse, but we have not aware of it. Um like in uh news or anything like that, it did not say be, it was recommended or uh military to keep our, keep the customers um contact tracing. Uh I have searched on uh Hawaii dot gov, uh the regulation that Greenwell wrote and then it did said. Uh I I forgot which number it was, but it did said, but it didn't say before that. Uh so but after that, we just made the list and we have been doing it. So we do accept the charge because we did we did not did it, you know, we did not do it. So it's our fault that we didn't aware and see uh open our eyes to see what the uh change meant that uh government made.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. You may have heard me uh inform another licensee that if you do have any questions regarding compliance with the rules of the Liquor Commission, please reach out to the administration. They can help you clarify or understand what your obligations are going forward, okay?
Yes, um uh I I do understand that now, but before that, at that time, we did not our law, uh we we weren't our outs. So that we were supposed to like follow up ourselves to, you know, continuously cha- uh keep up with the changes. But now we.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item seventeen.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number seventeen. All those in favor?
I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I, motion is carried. Thank you, Mister Cody.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, calling agenda number eighteen. Pot Pot Shabu Ramen.
Um Chair members of the Commission, I spoke with the representative for Pot Pot Shabu and Ramen who requested a continuance until March four. I have no objection.
Thank you, Ms. Ogata. Motion to continue agenda item eighteen to March four, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number eighteen to March fourth, twenty twenty-one. All those in favor?
I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I, motion is carried. Calling agenda item nineteen, Club Femnu, Mister Kiuchi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. We waive reading of the charge and deny all four charges in agenda item number nineteen as be set next available.
Thank you, Mister Kiuchi. Um Ms. Rai, point of order, um can we just set the this matter for a contested hearing on the next available?
Yes, you need not accept uh the char- uh the plea at this time. You can just go ahead and uh uh continue to next available.
Okay, uh motion to continue agenda item nineteen to the next available hearing date for a contested case hearing.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number nineteen to the next available for a contested hearing. All those in favor?
I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I. Motion is carried. Uh agenda item twenty, Club Femnu, Mister Kiuchi.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. As to agenda, agenda item number twenty, waive reading of the charge, deny the charge, and ask to be set for an adjudication hearing.
Thank you, Mister Kiuchi. Motion to continue agenda item twenty to the next available hearing date for a contested case hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty to the next available day for a contested hearing. All all those, uh motion carried. Oh, I'm sorry, all those in favor? Sorry.
I vote, I vote I.
Aye.
I also vote I, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hey, people, bear with me, round twenty-one. Hey, Liquor Administrator, any legislative updates?
Uh nothing, uh uh nothing beyond what I've already uh distributed. We're actually up to now uh a hundred eight, eight, eighteen bills, thirty, uh forty-one of which have to do with liquor and I am looking forward to like first crossover when these, when this like list is gonna shrink. It's it's kind of an unusual session, but I uh I'll, you know, as uh we've done in the past, we'll just keep you posted periodically with what is going on at the, at the Capitol.
Thank you, Mister Rai. Okay, um agenda number twenty-two, any admin matters?
None from me.
Anything else, people? We're done?